Thank you very much. Good morning. Welcome to the Council of Ordinary Meeting of the 24th of November 2022. The meeting is commencing at 9am. I call attendance at commencement. There's myself, councillor Ireland, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner, councillor Malikin, councillor Kunsman, and I can see councillor Doyle. The deputy mayor councillor Madson has let us know he's had a 10-minute delay, so I expect to see him here soon. I'll move on now to the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of a proud people. We now move on to the opening prayer and I invite councillor Ireland to provide the opening prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we seek you to be with us in this meeting today. Assist us to be an example to others, bringing strength and encouragement in whatever we do, and equip us for the ongoing challenges as they arise. Give the guidance to continue to make wise decisions for both the short and the long-term benefits of our city and our community, regardless of however difficult and unpopular some will be. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you councillor Ireland. Apologies again, the deputy mayor has a 10-minute delay. I don't have any leave of absences unless anyone would like to give any on the floor? No? I'll move on then to item five, which is a condolence motion. And I move that council express its condolences on behalf of the city to the family of Mr Arnold George Reich, to Arnold's wife Joyce Reich and five children, David, Russell, Stuart, Wendy and Carol, along with his 15 grandchildren. There are many in Rosewood and across Ipswich that mourn you, sorry, that mourn with you, and wish to celebrate this remarkable man who lived an extraordinary life, protecting and nurturing flora, fauna and the environment. Arnold recently celebrated his 90th birthday and has been a resident of Rosewood since 1959. Arnold was a primary school teacher from the 1950s through to 1964, when he transferred to high school teaching, which he enjoyed thoroughly until his retirement in 1989. Arnold was an avid gardener, something he inherited from his father Percy. But it was through his research for his classes that he began to educate himself about the local geography and history, and his interest in native plants grew. He learned a lot from his mentor Lloyd Bird, who was a coal miner and a native plants whiz, always on hand to share his extensive knowledge. The work Arnold did, supported by his lovely wife Joyce, in the creation of the Rosewood Scrub Arboretum and Mason's Gully Rehabilitation, stands testament to the power of grassroots organisations, proof that one person's simple idea can make a difference. Arnold wanted the community to come together and plant trees, and that is what they did. In 2000, Arnold stood in the barren landscape in Mason's Gully at Rosewood, where the bushland had been cleared decades before, and was transported back to the days when giant kangaroos and prehistoric marsupials roamed the landscape, when the trees and shrubs evolved their characteristic prickles, spines, hard leaves and unpalatable chemicals as a means of survival. Or perhaps to 1828, when the density of the scrub stopped explorer Alan Cunningham in his tracks. Faced with a barrier of hoot pine and vines and shrubs, he had to skirt south, close to the side of Rosewood, then along the Bremer to make it through. And so Arnold set about creating his vision. The Mason's Gully Conservation Project was established in 2000 through Olympic Land Care funding to honour local Rosewood Olympians Winita Feldham and Anthony Martin, who competed at the Sydney Olympics. Arnold pulled together the upper primary classes and high school horticultural classes, along with a band of land care volunteers, who came together on a planting day and planted seedlings. Arnold was thrilled to see some of the same school students return for the 20th anniversary of the Mason's Gully Transformation in 2020. Of course, the planting 22 years ago was the easy part. Since then, the passionate horticulturist, his wife Joyce and volunteers have worked tirelessly to nurture, water and sustain the plants through droughts and flooding. Today, Mason's Gully is a thriving home to dozens of species of native plants, many that Arnold grew from seeds. Arnold was also an active member of the Rosewood Uniting Church, reflecting those values in his work each day. He believed creation to be precious and that it should be taken care of. Arnold's knowledge of the Rosewood scrub species was unparalleled, but so was his love of teaching, and he shared his knowledge freely and passionately to many who were lucky to work alongside him. He inspired many others to volunteer and to improve the natural environment. Arnold was a life member of the Westmoreton Land Care Group. He was also a member of the Native Plants Queensland Ipswich Branch and the Rosewood District Protection Organisation. In recognition of their work, Arnold and Joyce Reich were recognised for their major contributions to a greener city at the 2021 Ipswich Environment Awards with the Environmental Hero Award. Council has built a walkway through the gully and it was named Arnold Reich Walk. When the walk was opened, Arnold said that he wanted people to take time to stand in the gully itself, to go down among the grass when the weather is clear and the waterway dry. He said, "We've got 360 degrees and if you look around yourself, they are all local trees from the Rosewood scrub." As Arnold takes his place in the full glory of sunlight, the root system of the volunteers he nurtured remain closely connected, and the whole community will continue to be shaded under the massive branches of his shared knowledge and wonderful living, breathing legacy. Arnold's funeral was last Friday. It was attended by myself and councillor Malikin, but also our federal MP Shane Newman was there and Jim Madden, our state MP was there as well. The church was quickly packed out. I think there was more people outside the uniting church and out on the pathways due to the love that Rosewood have for Arnold. I'll put that condolence motion to the vote. Those in favour? Thank you. It's unanimous in the room and carried. I'll move to tributes and there are none. I move item seven, presentations of petitions. There are none. I'll move on now to the presentations and deputations, and there is one. It's the presentation of the National Award for Local Government for Disaster Preparedness in 2022. Ipswich continues to lead the way in disaster preparedness, flood mitigation and increased response capacity. I'm very pleased to be able to present to council the Disaster Preparedness Award from the National Awards for Local Government. The award was presented by the Australian Government's Department of Infrastructure, Transport, Regional Development, Communication and the Arts for Ipswich City Council's Ipswich Integrated Catchment Plan. Council has also awarded an honourable mention in the Women in Local Government category for leading by example. The National Awards for Local Government are an annual celebration of Australian local government achievements. The awards highlight innovative and resourceful solutions implemented by local governments that make a difference to their local communities, and we have certainly done this with these projects. The Ipswich Integrated Catchment Plan is the result of two and a half years of investigation and is the most comprehensive flood study ever undertaken in Ipswich for prevention and mitigation of future flood events. We have received positive feedback from both stakeholders and the community regarding our response to the weather events in February and May. The Inspector General of Emergency Management supported council's ongoing flood recovery in his recent review, as has the state government. Council's flood forums recently, our listening tour, also gave residents the opportunity to be heard and make sure, and many were so pleased with council's response. Having this plan in place provided the framework that allowed for council and residents to enhance their preparation and response. While there are many team members across council who have contributed to this work, and it was a whole of organisation project, I would like to took the opportunity to especially thank the following team members for this achievement. I would like to thank Kay Cavanagh, Matthew Pinder, Phil Smith, Gareth Wilson, Ho Isang Yow and Jane Pinder. Council also received an honourable mention in the Women in Local Government category for its efforts in supporting women in leadership positions and mentoring up and coming female leaders. We are one of the few councils in Australia that has both a female mayor and a female CEO. Across council, five out of the nine councillor positions are held by women. Forty-four per cent of our employees are women and 41% of senior leadership roles are held by women. It takes a team effort, a great culture and a can-do attitude to achieve awards like these, and Ipswich City Council continues not only to meet the community's expectations, but excel in our endeavours to deliver positive outcomes for the community. So on that CEO, I'll hand over this award. And there's a lovely little trophy as well.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Of course, as you have done, I pass on all of the thanks to the foresight and the teamwork that has gone into the achievement of this award and this incredibly important space for this local government area. So pass the thanks straight on to the team. Well done to you all. Thank you.
Well done. I can see some in the gallery. Thank you. Public participation, nil. We now come to item 10, matters of public interest, and councillor Kunsman has a matter of public interest.
Thank you, Chair. Mayor and councillors, I bring to your attention a matter of public interest. This will cover the subject of domestic and family violence within the context of the UN-sponsored 16 Days of Activism and with reference to this council's commitment to action in tackling domestic and family violence. The 16 Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence is an annual international campaign that starts on the 25th of November, the International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women, and runs until the 10th of December, Human Rights Day. In support of this civil rights initiative, the United Nations Unite Campaign to End Violence Against Women and Girls calls for global action to increase awareness, galvanise advocacy efforts and share knowledge and innovations. Ipswich Centre Club has taken a legal, leading role locally and with Centre International in auspicing the 16 Days of Activism within its foundation pledge to advance the status of women. They are to be congratulated on their persistence in highlighting this issue. Ipswich City Council has undertaken a suite of actions to highlight domestic violence through providing leadership through its membership of Ipswich Integrated System Working Group. Other activities include a website listing support services with direct information for seeking help. This website also shows how residents can help others when they suspect or know that domestic and family violence is occurring. Council supports local advocacy group and will lead with a symposium in May next year, which is Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Month. Close to home, council has extended the leave time available to employees suffering domestic violence to assist them to seek help and to relocate and highlighted the issue through education of staff. In all of this, council is making a strong statement against gendered violence. Driving this response is the support of councillors. Council's role is as connector and community leader, part of an intention to contribute to a safe and inclusive community. The matter of domestic and family violence is of concern to all of us. Not only is it devastating and dangerous for victims, but consumes resources that could be better used. The recent inquiry into policing of domestic and family violence highlights, apart from other concerns, just how much police time and resources are used up in dealing with related incidents and with threats of violence. Domestic and family violence is inversely affected by changing social conditions, the cost of living, housing insecurity and unemployment. And an increase can be demonstrated in times of disaster when social supports are disrupted and anxiety is increased. But at heart are some very profound questions about gender equality, the rights of women to live lives unfettered by surveillance and the rights of children to live secure lives untouched by violence. Work with women affected by violence leads them to think of themselves as survivors and not victims as they learn life-changing skills. It is a difficult and challenging change to a way of living that is dangerous at every turn and leaves children fearful and confused and without a moral example. Later today, we will dedicate the Red Bench in Torma Place. The presence of a red bench in a public location aims to raise awareness and provide an opportunity for this important issue to remain visible. This is another example of council's commitment to the prevention of domestic and family violence and our acute awareness of the varial costs of and the damage to our community.
Here councillor Kunsman, do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank councillor Kunsman for coordinating this project and this initiative. Such an important issue for council and our wider community. Thank you.
There's a great deal of thanks I had to council because of their prompt response to the request for the Red Bench and their continuing cooperation, and I thank them very much.
Thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item 11, which is the declaration of interests and matters on the agenda. Does anyone have any declarations of interest?
Thanks, Mayor. In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act, I councillor Fekner informed the meeting that I have declarable conflict of interest in item number 15.6 entitled Report to Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee. The nature of my declarable conflict of interest are my business interests in both A1A Proprietary Limited and Bahazanv Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town in Ipswich. I plan on dealing with this conflict by leaving the room while the matter is discussed and voted on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Fekner. Oh, sorry, councillor Tully? You have a conflict, a declaration?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I have a declarable conflict of interest in item three of the GIDW report, which is titled... Sorry, just reading through the previous thing.
I think you declared that at the last...
I did, but I'll need to declare it at the council meeting again. In relation to the report, in relation to the Ipswich Cemetery. I don't, insofar as I'm a trustee of the Goodness Cemetery, appointed by the governor in council, I don't have any financial or personal benefit in relation to that connection, and I propose to stay in the meeting and vote on the matter.
Thank you. Are there any questions of councillor Tully? I'll move that councillor Paul Tully participates and votes on item three of the GIDW agenda entitled Ipswich General Cemetery Heritage Project Final Concept Design, because there's no personal financial benefit to him, and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunsman. Any discussion?
Thank you, Chairperson. Didn't we already determine that?
We did at the previous meeting, but this is another meeting.
All right. That's a wonderful piece of legislation from our friends at the Department of Local Government.
Thank you. So councillor Tully, would you like to say anything to that?
I'm not sure we can blame the people in the department. It was the members of the government who approved the regulation and the legislation in relation to that. And the other meeting was of a committee, which has to be declared, and it has to be declared at a subsequent council meeting.
I think the belt and braces approach is probably the best. Thanks councillor Tully. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hands. It's unanimous, noting that councillor Tully did not vote. Thank you. Do we have any other declarations of interest on matters on the agenda? Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
In accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, councillor Jacob Madsen informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 15.6 titled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee's report. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is among the executive of the Ipswich Tradeshall and Labour Day Committee, and our building, the Ipswich Tradeshall, is adjacent to the CBD redevelopment. As a result of my conflict of interest, I will leave the meeting room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Are there any other declarations of interest? Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 12, which is now the confirmation of minutes. And I'll move item 12.1, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 22nd of October 2022. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Malikin. Any amendments proposed? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Move to item 13, merrill minute. There is none. Move to item 14, business outstanding, and there is none. So we'll now move on to reception and consideration of committee reports. And for the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee, there were no decisions that were made under delegation, so all the matters are to be decided today. So item 15.1 is the report on the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee of the 10th of November. I move that that be accepted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Tully. Any discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I now move on to item 15.2, which is the report of the Governance and Transparency Committee. And I'll hand over to the chair. I think we're just making some minor amendments to some dates. I do have them here. Deputy Mayor, if you want me to read them out?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'd recommend that all the recommendations of the committee proceed, apart from item 11, as per the recommendation on the screen.
Okay. So the recommendation to us is that council adopt the recommendations of that committee with the exception of item 11? Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Malikin. Any discussion on that report? It's councillor Tully? Yes?
Yes, Mayor. There's just one item, item five, which is the report in relation to drug and alcohol councillors' policy is detailed in attachment one. The report states that, the report that's come to the committee and now to council, that it's a summary of how the policy has been administered since its adoption for the mayor and councillors' consideration. It's just the wording of the recommendation. That policy is still in effect. It was adopted on the 18th of November last year. It wasn't set to expire. It's still in operation. The recommendation talks about adopting the policy, which is a bit odd seeing the policy is already there and there's no recommendation that it be changed or amended. So I've just sent to the committee clerk a proposed variation to that, and that be that the drug and alcohol councillors' report be received and noted.
As opposed to having...
Yeah, well, you don't...
It be adopted.
Yeah, you don't adopt it twice.
Yes. That policy doesn't look to be amended, from what I can see. So as the mover of that, councillor Mads, are you okay with that amendment?
Mayor, we've broken from established practice, and I believe you were listed as the mover on the screen this morning.
Oh, was I? I believe, sorry, that councillor Mads was the mover, because he... As the chair of that, you moved the recommendations with the exception of item 11?
That was just how to deal with the minutes. I think councillor Madsen, as the chair of the committee, is referring to the mover of the motion on the day at the committee with yourself?
Oh, sorry, you took it on the day?
No, I'm referring to the screen in front of me that says that Maitreys Harding moved the recommendations.
It was my understanding that it was yourself that moved it? Is that your understanding, Deputy Mayor?
Perhaps, but it's not on the screen, so...
I think it's a correction.
Can we correct that, please?
Yep, yep.
Thank you for picking that up. So councillor Tully has made a suggestion, an amendment, and I just want to check with Deputy Mayor, do you accept that amendment?
Yes, I think it's a prudent and forthcoming piece of advice at the exactly perfect last chance.
Thank you. As the second, councillor Malikin, do you accept that as well?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Okay, so the law of motion before us, that the drug and alcohol councillors' report be received and noted?
Mayor, may I just ask a question on that item?
Well, we're actually, I guess, we were at the report. Yes, okay.
I just wanted to know, and I'm a little bit confused, how does the councillors get this test? Like, is it done here in the council building or do we have to go somewhere? And how many days before should we get it done? And I'm just wondering what the cost is, if we have it done every month?
These are the exact same things that came up during the actual committee meeting. I'll hand over to the CEO.
Certainly. So, and I believe that an email has been circulated with the advice as well, but I'm happy to share that councillors can request a test at any time voluntarily. And so if you wish to request a test before any committee or council meeting, just simply make contact in line with the policy, with the Workplace Health and Wellbeing Manager, and he will be able to arrange the test. I can refer to my emails for the costs and I can share those soon. There was some advice being confirmed around the exact costs of the kits, initially thought to be around $70 per kit, but I think we've clarified that it's a lesser amount of approximately $20. So I'll just check my emails and confirm that in a moment.
So just confirming, they're actually done here in council? That's what I'm.
Yes, sorry, in the building.
Okay, thank you.
I'll now put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. Deputy mayor, would you like to move some of the amendments for item 11?
Yes, I'm comfortable doing that this morning.
So deputy mayor, you're moving that the dates has been in the committee papers, those particular dates, that the council meeting for August be changed from the 20th of August to the 24th, that each of the committee meetings for August be changed from the 6th of August to the 10th of August, the day of committee meetings be changed from Tuesday to Thursday, and the three instances where the committee meetings are held on a Tuesday be identified with an asterisk on the 18th of April, the 5th of September, the 20th of November?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Mulligan. Any discussion on item 11 there? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We're now move on to item 15.3, which is the report of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee of the 10th of November. And I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how he would like that report managed.
I'd just like to move that council adopt the recommendations of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Now, I prefer any discussion?
Just briefly mentioning a couple of the highlights, that our libraries are extremely well-loved. The survey with more than 1,000 respondents had a satisfaction rating of more than 95%, which is an absolutely incredible result. So the libraries team should be very proud of that result, because it's directly reflective of the customer service that they give to our residents every day in our wonderful libraries. And secondly of note, and absolutely worth mentioning here, was the presentation that was given to committee. We were discussing in relation to the milestone report with the Indigenous Accord, and the officers who presented were all part of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Working Group, and they did themselves really proud, telling our committee about some of the wonderful initiatives that they've got underway. It's a really amazing group of people, highly motivated, and it's kind of first of its kind for this organisation, and it feels like we're moving in the right direction. The establishment of that group means a lot for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander employees, and we heard that the attendance of those meetings is extremely high and only growing every month. I've spoken since our last committee to a couple of the working group members who went to a conference down in Sydney, and that opportunity was absolutely wonderful, and they all really enjoyed themselves, and are feeling highly motivated by the sorts of people that they got to listen to. I'm very jealous, because I heard that Ernie Dingo was down there, so they all had such a wonderful time. And it's great that the organisation will give opportunities like this to our employees. So that's kind of the highlights of my committee, and absolutely worth mentioning there. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Fekner. Any other discussion? I just want to thank you councillor Fekner, and also councillor Kunselman, the chair, the deputy chair. I know behind the scenes, you put a lot of time and effort and leadership and guidance in the library, so I want to thank you very much for such a fantastic result, and to the organisation as well. But thank you very much for providing that behind the scenes leadership. Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried.
Excuse me, Mayor, may I clarify that earlier matter, just for the record, in relation to the drug and alcohol policy question from councillor Ireland?
Thank you. Just to confirm that the advice provided on the 10th of November is that the each drug test is approximately $19, and the tube for the breath test for the alcohol is $2. Thank you.
And could I just confirm that was sent to councillor Ireland as well?
All councillors, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 15.4, which is the report of the Economic and Energy Development Committee. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how she would like this report managed.
I'd just like to adopt the recommendations from the committee, please.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Fekner. Any discussion? We'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We're now move on to item 15.5, which is the report of the Environment Sustainability Committee of the 10th of November. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee to see how he would like that report managed.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move that the recommendations of the Environment Sustainability Committee meeting number 10 of 2022 be adopted.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Fekner. I'll open up to the mover and second for any comments? No comments? In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. And now move on to item 15.6, which is the report of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee of the 10th of November. I'll hand over to the committee chair to see how she would like this report managed.
Thank you, Chair. I move that council adopt the recommendations of the Central Redevelopment Committee.
Thank you very much. Is that, may I call for a second? Thank you councillor Kunselman. I'll leave it open for any comments from the mover or the second?
I guess just to sum up the year that we've just had within the Nicholas Street precinct, and we've achieved some great milestones, and of course, Justice Week, the official SOD turning there at the Commonwealth Hotel, and there's activity underway on Allenborough Street as we commence works on the venue building as well, and construction for the cinema within that venue building is underway, or demolition is underway. So I'm really excited by the lineup of tenants that have currently executed leases with council. There's some really, really exciting offerings still in legals that we can't talk away about, and I can't wait for the time that we can announce to the community. So a very exciting year ahead in 2023, lots to look forward to.
Thank you councillor Doyle. And I think Stella Rossa's opening up very soon as well, I think.
I'm hoping within, yeah, the next few days, we should have Stella Rossa open. And there may be one or two more open just in time for the Christmas lights in Nicholas Street. So residents, I urge everyone, if you haven't been in, come in and have a look. And even though, and even some of those shops that are under construction, some of those businesses, you might get a bit of a sneak peek through the windows of what's coming. It's very exciting.
Thank you councillor Doyle. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. I'll just wait for the deputy mayor and councillor Fekner. Okay. Thank you. Now move on to the officers' reports. So we're on to item 16.1, the CEO's Organisation Performance Report for October 2022. I'll move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Fekner. Any discussion on it? Myself, thank you CEO, I always gain a lot from these reports, so thank you very much for a very high-level and comprehensive report on the organisation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chair.
There's no other discussion. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to quite an important item on the matter, which is the 16.2, the adoption of the Ipswich City Council's annual report for 2021 to 2022. I'll move that. Do I have a second for that matter? Thank you councillor Doyle. I guess opening up for discussion and review. I just take into account just the enormous work that our council does in providing valuable services to our community. I see our service centre took over 172,000 phone calls in that year. We had a half a million attendees at our pools. And I was delighted to see that the feedback and contributions on our community engagement platform, Shapir Ipswich, has gone up 30%. So that's great to see that trend. And it's the many awards that our council has received from organisations across the country. Also noted on page 88, the financial ratios, and see that the operating surplus ratio is well within target. Also, the asset sustainability ratio, whilst isn't greater than 90%, like the target, it has improved from last year from 57.44 to 70.69. Also, the net financial liabilities ratio, whilst not, again, not greater than 60, as the, sorry, is not meant to be greater than 60%. Last year was at 69.73, and it has gone down to 67.13. So trending in the right direction, which was very pleasing. I'll open it up for any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to the monthly financial performance report for October 2022, and I'll move that. Do I have a second? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Any discussion? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. No, we don't have it unanimous. I think councillor Doyle, no? Nope, okay. I'll just skip around the room. Pardon me, will I just check something? Pardon me, I just don't have the financial performance report printed in my folder. I'm just checking online.
Sure.
My notes.
Are we in a purgatory of mid-vote currently, Chair, or can you please inform us?
Yes, so I just.
The status of where we are on this matter.
I'm just looking, if you indulge me, I'm just looking, relooking it up. I don't have it in my folder. Normally I have it printed off. I don't see it here.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Sorry. Sorry, it is in my folder. Okay, I'll go back to the vote. Those in favour again? Myself, councillor Madsen, councillor Ireland, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner, councillor Mulligan, councillor Kunselman. Those against? Those abstaining? Thank you councillor Johnick. Now move on to item 16.4, which is the report on the Audit and Risk Management Committee of the 5th of October 2022. I'll move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion on that report? No. In that case, I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. I'll move on to item 16.5, which is the report on the Audit and Risk Management Committee of the 25th of October. I'll move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion on that report?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, not specifically on the report, I guess, but just to remind everyone that the Audit and Risk Committee, Management Committee are building the agenda for next year. And I've requested from fellow councillors if there's any items that they specifically would like considered by the Audit and Risk Management Committee, noting three of the members, external members with a combined experience of over 100 years. So it's a great opportunity and resource for us at council to utilise. So send them through, please.
Thank you very much, councillor Doyle. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item 17.1, which is the notice of motion for opening prayer from councillor Ireland. So I'll hand over to you councillor Ireland to.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that council invite the Ipswich Ministers Fraternal to provide a representative to offer the opening prayer at each ordinary council meeting between now and the final meeting for this term in March 2024.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Mulligan. I'll open up for any discussion. Councillor Ireland, you'd like to, as the mover, would like to discuss?
Ipswich City Council has had a long tradition, from what I understand, it's gone back well over 100 years, of the ministers of various denominations giving the prayer to open proceedings at ordinary council meetings. This council has continued with the opening prayer, and my notice of motion simply requests that we now follow that tradition, in this case, and invite members of religions to read the opening, or to deliver an opening prayer.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, councillor Mulligan.
Thank you, Chair. May I ask, through the chair, councillor Ireland, as to why it would be through to the final meeting for this term and not continuing?
I just think a new council will, may like to look at it again. I'm not saying it's here in perpetuity. If that's what you all decide, that is fine. But I'm leaving it open to a new council to make their own decisions on it.
Chair, I may suggest that it just be open-ended, and that if the, any future council, including this one, at any stage wishes to make an amendment to that, that can be done then?
Okay, I accept that amendment.
You said move it. Okay, so you've moved the second, so I'll just get Vicky to put that up. So the motion is that council provide the Ipswich Ministers Fraternal to provide a representative to offer the opening prayer at each ordinary council meeting. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Around the room, it's myself, councillor Madsen, councillor Ireland, councillor Johnick, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner, councillor Mulligan. Those against? Those abstaining? You're abstaining? Thank you. It says abstain. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions on notice? No, just before I close, I just want to say, go the Brisbane Lions. We've got the AFL Women's Grand Final on this weekend. I see councillor Tully, you've got your Brisbane Lions tie on, Miss Scott.
I have.
We look forward to seeing it at Springfield Central, as the Brighton Homes Arena is.
In the city, in the city of Ipswich.
In the city of Ipswich.
Can we rename for one game the Ipswich Lions?
Councillor Tully's going to go on the Ipswich Lions. Thank you very much, and I'll close the media at 9:45.
Oh, Mayor, I was going to ask, sorry, if councillor Tully was capable of singing the Lions song. No, give us a few drinks, but then I won't do a test after that.
Thank you. I'll close the media at 9:45. Thank you.